Roll call please, Mr. George. Greg the Boss in here.
Here.
Karen Carlson here.
Here.
Carrie McGee.
Yeah.
Tandy Duxbury here.
President.
Gorm.
Here.
And Bledsoe is absent. And Mr. Spearman, Bledsoe and Regent, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if you'd be in standing, please, let's bow our heads. Lord, help our council achieve a strong desire to do good, be honest, serve others, and faithfully fulfill our obligations to our constituents, neighbors, friends, and family. Help us to be ethical in all of our dealings and fulfill our obligations to our community. Amen. Please be seated. Mr. Spearman, review it, please.
Yes, thank you for the emergency. Two actors in your room just close your right. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, first up is the approval of town council minutes for March 28th and April 7th. Do I have a motion for the March 28th minutes? I'll abstain, I was not here at those two meetings. Okay, gentlemen?
I'll make a motion. Second.
Any comments, issues, questions? Okay, and all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Approved. Okay, also the minutes for the April 7th budget session, can I have a motion to approve, I mean to accept? Again, I'll abstain. I'm not there for that meeting.
Okay. So move. Second.
All in favor? Aye. So approved. Okay, next we have a very special certificate of recognition for an employee who is actually the town's longest-employed employee. Mr. Testa, would you like to come up?
The town of Coventry, county of Kent, state of Rhode Island, and province plantations proclamation. Whereas Louis H. Testa has risen through the ranks of employment with hard work in the Department of Public Works over the course of 41 years. And whereas Louis was hired in 1975 as a laborer and moved through the ranks as driver and operator until in 2000, when he was promoted to the position of working foreman, which attributed to his skills, work ethic, and training. Now therefore, be it resolved that the town council of the town of Coventry expresses its sincere appreciation and thanks to Department of Public Works working foreman Louis H. Testa for his 41 years of exemplary service with the town of Coventry and wishes him good health and a long enjoyable retirement. Testimony whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the town to be affixed this 25th day of April 2016. Karen Carlson.
And it's not often we give away a key to the town. And I'm not sure how much people want to use it, but I understand that people do try it and maybe it'll work, and if it doesn't, it's also a can opener. A bottle opener. Thank you. And I heard a rumor that you've been here so long that when sand had to be spread by hand, that's what you did with the shovel? Before the trucks could do it?
Not here. Westmore.
Oh, okay. Well, that's a long time. Thank you. Thanks for your service.
Thank you very much.
You probably have keys to everything in town already, anyway.
We got changed all along.
Can I use the door?
I hope they'll take our fish out now.
That's what we do, I believe.
That's right.
Come with me.
We'll pick you up.
You're both here.
Well, as you can see, Mr. Shipley is not here this evening, so there will be no president's comments, but the council district updates, starting with Councilman McGee.
Actually, I've got nothing before. Everything's going pretty smooth. We're happy to see paving being done, so no box. I guess you have it now.
Mrs. Duxbury?
I actually am going to ask Mr. Gorm to help me with this, but I understand we have a resolution or we have finalized the appeal process on the marijuana grows on Resmore Road, and the grows have to be removed.
Yeah, the town prevailment Superior Court, they took an appeal to the Supreme Court, and the Supreme Court rejected the appeal. So, yes.
That's all I have. Okay, for District 1, just in case anybody hasn't heard, the Hopkins Hollow Bridge is closed. And when I mean closed, I mean it's gone pretty much because the state's working on it. There are signs, there's a huge sign that's all lit up and it says "Bridge Closed," but I don't think people realize that means you can't go through down the road. So if you know anybody that lives in the neighborhood or you're planning on going that way, you're going to have to go around to 102, probably to Plainfield House, and then back up into the rural area 3. So that's my comment.
Oh, updated this side of District 2.
Okay. Next is the school department report. Mrs. Patno, come on up.
So I assume I turn this around?
Yes, turn this around. Need some help? Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Kathy Patno, 38 Fields Road Drive. So I just want to thank the council again for this opportunity to give you a brief rundown of what the school department's been doing in the month of April. So first on our agenda was April 2nd, the Air Force Junior ROTC held their Military Ball at the Villa. And I heard, I wasn't able to attend, but I heard it was, I think somebody did attend, that, you know, it was a wonderful time by all. This coming Friday, April 29th, is their annual awards night, and that will be held at Coventry High School at 6:00. And you folks are all invited on this evening to attend that. On April 6th, the 36th Annual CTA Scholarship Award Night was held. Through the combined contributions of current and retired Coventry public school employees, and over 65 community donors, 126 Coventry High School seniors received a total of $100,000, which is quite an achievement. I'm not sure if you folks know or if the public knows where I think the only school department district that actually has this kind of program, where employees actually have money taken out of their payroll on a weekly, monthly basis to help support this. So if a donor from the community donates, let's say $500, $100, the CTA scholarship fund matches that, so it's really $1,000 or $200. So it's not the kind of program where, you know, only the top kids get the awards. It's really a kind of a lottery system. So any kid that has at least a certain grade point average, which is kind of, you know, not super, super high, they get thrown in the pot and their names are pulled out. So it's really a pretty outstanding program. Okay, the school safety committee is meeting again tomorrow. Representatives of the fire, police, and school departments are all participating in this meeting. The plan is to update school safety procedures and protocols to current best strategies. The plan will be developed with an expected rollout in the fall. The school department is in the process of developing the first annual school report. It'll be a small booklet, which gives a brief overview of the demographics of each school and the highlights and activities available. There will be a district summary section with statistics about the community and school achievement. The booklet will be available at local real estate offices, town offices, and online. The projected release date is mid to late May. And this is something that our communications committee kind of came up with, because several districts do this. Actually, they probably have the money to actually send it out to the families of the people going to school, and actually just people in general. But I don't think we have quite enough money to actually do a mailing. So there will be the online version, and we'll try to get that message out to everybody. We'll give you guys a copy, obviously. On Saturday, April 9th, the Coventry High School Unified Arts Department held an arts and crafts exhibition showcasing student work in technical education, visual arts, and music. There will be many other events coming up between now and the end of June. The council is always welcome, as you know, and the school department will make sure that the council is informed of the calendar that's coming up. We call this the year, this is the beginning of our season where, well, if I was married, my husband would never see me, but those of us who have mates or whatever, you don't get seen very much because of your honor every night, basically. But it's a great time of year for us because it's a celebration of our students, and we look forward to it. On April 12th, the Coventry High School Drama Club presented an encore performance of "The Faces of the Place." I think you might have heard about that play that was performed. They won the state competition, and so this particular encore performance was a fundraiser so the community could come back again. And then after the play, the school committee wanted the actors with certificates, and we had a little small reception in the library, which was great. And then this weekend, they will be presenting at the New England Drama Festival. And that's not really a competition, it's just a showcase of plays. So I'm sure they'll be very, you know, excited to see other performances as well as people to see ours. School nurse teachers, Peg Carroll from Washington Oak and Emily Cunningham Jost of Weston Coventry have become National Board Certified School Nurse Teachers. This is an impressive accomplishment, and Coventry is fortunate to have such highly-qualified, dedicated professionals. And then finally, the school department was recently contacted by our visitors from New Zealand. Several meetings have taken place, and they are eager to establish reciprocal relationships for students and staff to visit on an exchange basis. So that's kind of exciting. That being said, I can hand the report in if there are any questions for me. I know we're seeing you.
Captain, I have a question.
Yeah?
Did you say that there was a Halloween Awards Night coming up?
Yeah, Friday night, Friday night at 6:00 at Coventry High School.
Friday night?
Yep.
When's your next school committee?
Tomorrow.
Across the street?
Across the street. And we'll see you all on Thursday?
Yes.
Yes. Thursday, the 28th is a public carry budget for school and town.
Any questions from anybody? Mrs. George, I would say.
The presentation on the sewer extension options.
Good evening. Len Skirka, Cameron, Coventry Sewers Association. I'd just like to inform you that the subcommittee, Eric Weston, Samson, myself, have been doing a lot of work, planning and preparing for sewers in the town.
Can you hear? Can you hear him?
Can you hear me now? Okay. So, you know, the past few months, the subcommittee, we've had many discussions on how to proceed with sewer-ing the town of Coventry as far as the remaining areas of the facility land. I spent a lot of nights, a lot of weekends, almost preparing a presentation for you guys, and then I realized I was missing one key part, and it was if any of you guys actually want me to do this. So the big question is, do you guys want to proceed with sewer-ing the town of Coventry?
I think it's imperative for our town to have economic development, so we have to develop our sewer system. That's my opinion.
Well, you're talking to the Easters, obviously.
I'm talking.
No, it goes so far.
There's a lot of different areas that need it, but more importantly, in the past, the big issue has been cost. And essentially, what I'm asking you is, if we move forward with sewer-ing the town, you're looking at sending assessments out to the taxpayers in the amounts of somewhere around $18,000 per rich household. So I know we've had a lot of resistance in the past, we also have a lot of reasons to move forward, but the question is, how are we going to?
If I may, some of the reasons, you know, are, we have the cesspool law in order, then we want to be able to elaborate, let the council know about that. And also, we have some money left, remaining money that was bonded to us a couple of years ago that has to be spent by a certain amount of time, or we're going to lose it. So we need to get out there and spend that money productively, and we've had a lot of discussion on the sewer subcommittee about where, and we have a list of potential areas. So I'm all for moving forward with this, but maybe you can explain, because of the, we put a mortgage on it a couple of years ago, because of the cost, the longer we wait, it's not going to get cheaper. And I think that we're trying to do it in such a way where we're dividing some of the areas up and try to keep the cost rather than have all one project going, the area was all managed, it's going to cost a lot more money. We're trying to divide it up to split the cost to everybody. So it's trying to be done in such a way that we can make it feasible, though nobody wants to have a $15,000 to $18,000 bill, you know, when the pipe goes in front of your yard. However, it really is necessary, there's a lot of people out there who need them, and with this new cesspool law, it's going to even affect a lot more. Could you maybe just explain that a little bit?
It's more than just the cesspool law. We have some pretty environmentally intensive areas that need sewers regardless. We have the cesspool law, the most recent one, that requires everybody with a cesspool to upgrade to a septic. It'd be much more beneficial to tie into a sewer, but in addition to the cesspool and the environment, there are areas where people are going to spend money on a septic, strictly invested into the town rather than invested into their own yard. So I would say the environmental reasons are the priority at first. The cesspool law, you know, that's, we should have had sewers in before this law came out, but we have the opportunity now, and, you know, it's a benefit to the town to do all this work. Work takes money. I can tell you, I have every single bit of it planned, prepared, ready to go. I just want to know if we're going to do it.
So the three options you gave us, one is Arnold Road plus Wendell plus Hazard. Option two is Arnold, Wendell, and Coventry Drive, and three is Arnold Road, Wendell, and Rawlinson. And it looks like since there's $2.1 million available, that will cover, is that right?
So the way I'd like to spend the money, we're going to get into a little bit of detail here, but we have the money that we have to spend. There's a lot of areas that need to be sewed, I would say, with more priority than others. However, the town is planning on spending a lot of money reconstructing Arnold Road. So before you reconstruct Arnold Road, we should get the sewers in the ground before the road is finished, and then we tear up all that vacuum and repair it. So that's kind of our focus right now, and that's more of a financial focus, but the priority areas environmentally along Arnold Road are the tidal lakes. There is along the shoreline, here is along the wetlands. Those guys have benefits. So yes, we have the money available. I don't know if that money will be able to cover that project.
Madam Vice President, Mr. Skirka doesn't have a presentation tonight, so the information that the council has before them, I'd take it to review. I think what Mr. Skirka is looking for is just sort of some head nods as to, should the staff is proceeding, working on the sewer plans and working with the subcommittee as well as our contractor, but he would like to do a presentation before the public and before the council as to these options that are laid out. And this is a public document, everybody can take a look at it. You can request it, we'll put it up on the town website Facebook page as well, links to it on our Facebook page. But I think we'll do a presentation in the future and explain a little bit better about what the options are.
I could break down all the details for you. I just want to know from you guys, if we're going to put the time into it, if we're going to move forward.
I do have a couple of questions that I would want. I understand you're going to do a work session, but if someone needed to replace a cesspool with a septic, what kind of money are they looking at?
Really, it varies upon each individual site, I would say.
On the average, or range?
Three-bedroom house, probably around $15,000 and $20,000 bucks.
So that would be approximately what it would cost them to hook into a sewer system?
Approximately.
Okay.
It's not that simple.
I understand.
More of a question, I'd prefer that the council and the public and our sewer subcommittee and available staff have a more well-rounded discussion about this when a presentation is ready and more details can be given, instead of answering, oh, well, you know, $18,000, $15,000, yes, no. You know, the presentation will be, okay, we are going to go forward. Which option, A, B, C, or D are we going to choose? If we're not going to go forward, we'll say, oh, we don't like any of those options, go back to the drawing table and come back with something else.
Right, but some of the things I'm going to be looking at and asking about in your presentation is, you know, price comparison. The other thing is, if this money is provided, if it's sitting there waiting to be used, and you run the system down there, that's covered, do those people that are on this street, or would they have to immediately pay for that? I know there's a payment period to pay for your assessment, but I guess these are kind of the things that I'm thinking about, is when we do make these choices, obviously it is an impact.
I can tell you, there's going to be a lot of work to get everything designed, get it constructed, get it funded, and get it completed to where it's usable for the consumer. We're going to do all that legwork to make sure that everything works out for a cost for the consumer that works. In the past, we, the previous council had just said, no more sewers, stop. So I kind of, I need some input from this council if we're going to move forward. I'll put all the legwork into it, give you guys all the data you need, and I can guarantee it, the legwork that we do to show you guys is for us to get sewers at a cost that is reasonable for the consumer.
May I add that the last council did put a moratorium on it. However, since then, we have come up with a new way of assessing, which is much more feasible to the homeowners in, like designing, like I said before, to split some of the projects up to make, keep the cost down. So things have changed considerably since the last council put a moratorium, because there was going to be some people that were going to receive bills of $20,000 plus, and there's not many of us in town that can afford that, so that's why we did stop it. But I personally am very interested in continuing sewer budget.
And I've had a lot of inquiries from people in Woodisakes that are around Johnson's Pond, because many of those people have cesspools and they need to do something about them. So if you balance, you know, where you're putting them, then obviously the cost maybe can be balanced across different.
That's exactly the key strategy here. So, yes.
When do we have to spend this, the balance of this money by, do you know?
I can probably answer that, but you want me to take care of yours?
So I'm Kent Engles with Weston and Samson, I'm the town's consultant for wastewater. You've taken, the town has taken a couple of bonds in the past couple of years to deal with ongoing work. The most recent work, obviously, was Contract 778, to sew this area and cesspool drive. The money that's left over was originally some of the money that was allocated for that, but it's already been bonded, so it's been sitting in a fund now for a couple of years. What ends up happening with the Rhode Island Infrastructure Bank is since that bond is already in place, the town is actually technically paying interest on it now. So while there's not a hard date to use it, the more folks that kind of leave that outstanding, the less they can do to kind of keep their finances in place in the Rhode Island Infrastructure Bank group. And at the same time, it disadvantages the Coventry because you're paying interest on money that you get no benefit from, considering the pool waiting to be spent. It's a little bit of a double answer, there's no discrete number, but in the past, they've tried very hard, once we get out to about five years, to make sure that the money's cleaned up. And there's some significant disadvantages for the town if you were to try to not spend it, reclose it, a lot of refinancing costs and things like that. So it really is, the big push that this fate has given us is, we really need to find a way to leave that money on the original intended purpose, is to build sewers. Sewers that were on priority was the requirement for money cesspool.
And Glenn, is Arnold Road your priority because we're going to be tearing it up, or because that's where you think it needs to go first?
A certain area of Arnold Road is a priority for the environmental concerns.
For the light?
All of Arnold Road is a priority because of the town's reconstruction.
Okay. Lord, do you have anything to say on the committee?
I hear it all. Madam Vice President, we can put this on the agenda again for the future and make sure that there's a presentation that let me know that the council is interested, and our sewer subcommittee and contractor will have all the numbers and information at their fingertips and be able to entertain questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Because I know Glenn does great workshops, lots of information.
Is that a thumbs up?
That's a thumbs up. Twice, too.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. George?
Consent agenda?
Yes.
Resolution approving sewer tie-in at 1600 Flat River Road.
Mr. Waters? Information is?
So the sewer subcommittee has recommended approval of an application for sewer tie-in by Custom Iron Works located at 1600 Flat River Road. And this is a consent agenda, so council can vote.
Motion to approve.
Second? Is that here?
Yes, second.
Yes. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So pass. Mrs. George?
A resolution appointing one member, Robert DePato, to the Coventry Housing Authority.
Mr. DePato is here. There he is. Would you like to come up?
Madam Vice President, do you want to put the vote through?
Oh dang it. See, I know, I should have told you. Okay, sorry. Hold that thought. Hold that thought. Just don't go too far. Well, Carrie wants to do that.
Yeah, we can.
We could do them all at once. So can I have a motion, please, to do all the appointments at once?
Madam Vice President, do you want to have the clerk read off the presidential?
Yes.
Resolution appointing James Dowling to the Coventry Land Trust. Resolution appointing Charles Horne to the Coventry Sewer Subcommittee. Resolution appointing Lynn Andrews, Charles Goss, and Ernest Rusak to the Friends of Human Services.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve these first-world resolutions? So move. Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. And could Mr. DePato, Mr. Dowling, Mr. Horne, Derek here, Ms. Andrews, Mr. Goss, and Mr. Rusak? Do you solemnly swear that you will be true and faithful to the state, support the laws and constitution thereof, and that you will well and truly execute the duties and responsibilities as a member of the Coventry Housing Authority, Mr. DePato?
I do.
Coventry Land Trust, Mr. Dowling?
Do.
Coventry Sewer Subcommittee, Mr. Horne?
Thank you.
Sorry. And Friends of Human Services, Mr. Goss and Mr. Rusak.
I do.
Thank you for the term which you are appointed, or until another, be engaged in your place, so help you God. Thank you so much for doing this.
Thank you.
You've got to wear the mask.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. You're very nice.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
I'm lucky to be here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
I'm looking for people to come up to this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
A resolution, discussion, and approval of Warren TD Declaration of Restrictions, release of Declaration of Restrictions.
Computers are handy.
Advisement in the matter of Central Coventry Park.
Mr. Waters?
Yep, I'll turn this item over to our downtown solicitor for discussion. Quick explanation, the town has some land. So, quick explanation, the town has some land, had some restrictions on it from the National Park Service, one of them was, you can't build a cell phone tower. Many years ago, the town built a cell phone tower on that land. So, in essence, to atone for the town's sins, for having built the tower on National Park Service land, which is over at Central Coventry Park, the town, about two or three years ago, put this in to work to dedicate a new portion of land, free of a cell phone tower, to the Central Coventry Park. So, that is, it's at its final stage, as we have the federal government on board. The land is being, it's part of a transaction involving a company called Cedar Creek Realty, which is, the principal of that company is John Assalone, as I understand it. And, so, the National Park Service has signed off on it. We're going to accept a dedication of land from Mr. Assalone's company, and in exchange, we're going to allow a very great tiny easement to Mr. Assalone's development. It's a four-lot subdivision. It's all been approved by the planning department. It results only in an administrative subdivision, but we have followed the process. And, there's also, in this resolution, a re-imposition of certain restrictions on Fairview Avenue, that are going to be released by the National Park Service, but the town will pick up those restrictions, because they restrict development of the parcel. Anybody who wants to know a little bit more about that, just feel free to inquire, have answered questions. But this resolution would achieve all of that.
Yeah, I'm glad you gave that explanation, but I'd like to see on the paperwork, we don't have a copy of the map or anything, and I also would have liked to seen something from the planning commission, saying that it was, comes through approval, because I usually don't, you know, I agree with the planning commission, but we have nothing in our paperwork, so I'm glad you gave me the explanation, because it was not thorough enough for me.
The, gee, I think, okay, well, I think we sent most of the paperwork over. We can, if you want to hold it for two weeks, it's really not a big deal.
No, I, I take it, well, I'm just in the future, I'd like to know the planning commission. You're telling me they, it came through the positive approval from planning commission?
It wasn't the planning commission, because it's an administrative subdivision, it was approved by Paul Sprague administratively, or he is ready to approve it, instead of, we're not going to do any of this unless the council says, go ahead with it. So, it will be approved by Paul Sprague administratively, I've confirmed that with him. So, the biggest thing to get behind this project was the federal government, that's why it's, this was all in place before I became solicitor, before this council was elected. I just decided I was going to follow this through, follow this through to finish it, because it's been hanging around for so long, it's been hanging around for like, I think, four or five years. So, I just took it upon myself to make sure it got done. I'm sorry that you didn't have a map. The map is helpful in every respect, except the easement, which you can't even see on the map, it's so small. The land that's being dedicated is just a, it's a kite-shaped piece of land, it looks almost like a diamond. The Park Service wants us to make sure that it's protected, that it's delineated, so there will be no confusion, that it's preserved land and that it's parkland. It will be delineated by six-by-six pressure-treated posts, every, I believe, 10 feet. That's going to be right in the deed. The National Park Service actually has been asking us to put a portion of the survey in the deed, which I've never seen done, but if it's what it takes to make the National Park Service happy, I will do it.
So, this came about because a cell tower was put up, and it was never, they never went through the proper procedure, they had to watch it.
Correct, correct. I think if they had to ask the Park Service if they could put a cell phone tower up in Central Coventry Park, I think the Park Service probably would have said no. So, this has been hanging around for a long time, that the town was really in violation of all of its covenants with the Park Service, and I think my predecessor, Fred Tobin, to his credit, got this worked out, but there were just, you know, there were three moving parts, the town, the National Park Service, and Mr. Assalone. And all three of them, it just, you had to coordinate all three to get them on board, especially the federal government.
I don't know if I understand, where's the easement coming to, what's the benefit of the town for this easement? If we're just, built a cell tower on land, we're going to have, how's the easement get involved, and should we just have some dedicated land?
Because, in order for, one of the inducements to Cedar Creek Realty, to make the dedication of land, was to give him a very small area as an easement for access to his subdivision.
Who's cell tower is this?
I believe it's the town's cell tower.
We own it?
Yeah.
We put it up?
We put it up, I believe we take, we enjoy the revenue of it.
We don't own it, I believe it's, uh...
Well, we get a share of the revenue. So, if you want to see the map, I'm happy to put it on, the federal government has taken like five year, or whatever, four years to do this, if you want to wait two more weeks, it's not going to make any difference.
I would recommend that if the council doesn't feel comfortable, we can ask more questions, that we postpone it two more weeks and move it down.
Yeah, I kind of would like that.
It's fine, I apologize, Member McGee, I thought the map was sent down, but I can, I can make sure that it's here for next time, and we'll, we'll go over it in detail. It's, it's the best way to deal with this, and I, I'm just happy that the Park Service is willing to let us do this, because the penalty otherwise would have been severe. You know, we basically just put up a cell phone tower without any permission from them, and that was probably not a good idea.
And you mentioned Fairview Avenue, what's...
There's a parcel on Fairview Avenue that the...
That's not in here, there's no mention.
It's in the, it should be in the, I think it's in the resolution, excuse me.
I don't see anything.
I don't see...
The release...
I see property in place, which is the road.
Yeah, if you could just, we can wait till next week, we can do that.
Yeah, we can, we can bring it in, and I'll, we'll have all of the documents ready. I apologize that they weren't here, I was under the impression that they were sent over.
Can I have a motion to table? Well, I'd like to ask a question first, or just make a point. Do we have the procedures and policy in place to not have this happen again?
Absolutely.
Thank you, thank you.
Now, may I have a motion to table?
Yeah, motion to table.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mrs. George, number six, please.
Resolution adopting revised municipal and police pension general fund surplus appropriation policy.
Madam Vice President, this is a resolution that sort of affirms an item of my letter that, in my, for my budget, that I presented to the town council, where it takes any portion of the town's surplus revenues, excuse me, surplus, surplus from the previous budget year, in excess of the 10%, and attributes it to the continuation of funding the town's pension, and as well as funding the town's capital needs going forward in the future. Previously, on May 16th, 2011, the council passed a resolution where 100% of the surplus would be to fund the town's pension liabilities. Since that time, the town has funded the pension liabilities through the recently passed bond resolutions. So, what I'm proposing to help fund the capital needs of the town, and have a more dedicated source of funding pending, if there is a surplus in our budget, that the town council, through this resolution, divide the future surplus of the town's monies to funding the pension liability at 25%, and the town's capital needs at 75%.
I think it's a good idea, I think it's a great idea, motion to approve?
Second?
I have a question.
Oh.
Well, we can motion, you can have your questions.
Okay. Second?
I keep, I keep your second, you get everybody.
I'm sorry.
Second.
Yes, my question is this, I really like this idea. I also think we should do something, I understand that the impact fees that we have in separate funds, they are, we can only spend them for certain things, I can explain to that. I was also told that they expire after eight years. I think we should also have something in place where we have a, on a regular process of using these, because in the past, it seems as though those have been little rainy-day funds, and if we're taking this surplus from the general fund, essentially to over, move it, overestimated, I suppose we've taxed the people, right? When you have a surplus, it's because they have paid tax.
But it's also, it's also, it's any money that the departments do not spend, so it's also helping to...
Correct, it's a savings of either expenses or excess revenue, however it ended up coming about. I think that, in fairness to the taxpayers, that we should start making it some sort of process to use those impact fees as appropriate, rather than having to take more out of the general fund once again, and have it onto the tax bill.
Right, the town does have impact fee ordinance that prescribes how the impact fees are to be spent, as well as, the useful life of the impacts, or the item that the impact fee is spent on, has to be greater than 10 years. So, that's prescribed in the ordinance, it's just a matter of having the department directors recognize that, and I'm working with them right now. I'm also having our finance director draw up a more of a user-friendly manual for the department directors on what impact fees can be used for, instead of just reading directly out of the ordinance from the cookbook. So, I'm helping, I'm encouraging our department heads to look at their impact fees and use them appropriately.
I think they, the issue is, they need to use them, yes, they can only be used for certain things, but what I don't want to see is, those being kind of pushed aside as a little, you know, slush fund, that can be used when something doesn't get approved. I think it needs to be in the reverse, that we should be using them as we can, as we are appropriately, and thereby freeing up those surplus to be put aside for future capital improvements. That, that's just my suggestion, that I think this needs to go hand-in-hand with how we're spending the impact fees, because I think at this point, I mean, we had our Parks and Rec people that came in, and they had over $200,000 in impact fees.
Yep, and we have, our police department, they're using some of their impact fees for locker room facilities. In the future, we'll be having our Department of Human Services coming in with requests, so I believe our Parks and Rec director is going to be coming back with more requests for the council, so they will be used, and we will continue to encourage.
I'm just thinking that they should be using those, rather than putting those things into capital, into the capital items, like for the current budget year.
I don't disagree with you, at the time when I made the proposal, yes.
Okay, so maybe we can see a resolution coming along at some point?
I don't know if a resolution is necessary.
Their policy, maybe a policy?
A policy will be, as I said, our finance director will be coming out with a manual for our department directors, and I'll continue to encourage our department directors to use their impact fees as appropriate.
Thank you.
And I will, as the town manager, I will look at the capital needs, and look at what can be used, paid for by the impact fees, and then that way, any surplus can continue to either go back to fund the fund balance, or however the council sees fit.
And I'm thinking if we can build that, then when we have big needs down the road, we can swing that on, those big needs, because now we're using those impact fees for other things.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and the other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes. Number seven, Mrs. George?
Resolution requesting that the General Assembly include authorization in the state fiscal 2017 budget for the green economy bond referendum.
Madam Vice President, this is a resolution that was discussed at a recent Rhode Island League of Cities meeting. The governor, in her budget, has a $35 million green economy bond budget line item, which funds open space protection, parks and bike, bikeway development, storm water management, and brownfield restoration programs. This resolution respectfully, respectfully requests that the Rhode Island General Assembly include an authorization in the state fiscal 2017 budget for a $35 million green economy bond referendum proposed by the governor, for voter consideration in the November 2016 general election.
Any questions?
It's a big process, but Tom, yes, I mean, we do have some brownfield money, uh, brownfields blocks in town, is it possible you must give some of this?
Yes, this would be available to all the municipalities in the state, and the town would be able to identify some projects that we can put in for this.
We'll use the state obligation to try to get us on board, yeah. Sorry.
So, this just puts a, supports it to have it put on the ballot for the town?
For a voter, yep.
Yes, for a voter. Can I have a motion, please?
Uh, cool.
Second?
Second.
Sorry, Greg.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any other questions? Okay. Mrs. George?
Next is a license application for a 90-day workers' license by Rhode Island Organic 301 Hopkins Hill Road.
My name's Kimberly McGee, and I'm at 301 Hopkins Hill Road.
And this is a business that you've been running for a couple of summers, right?
One summer, I did it last year, coming up to October, and I think it was very successful. We have good traffic coming in, but not too much traffic coming in, and basically, we sell organic fruits and vegetables to the neighborhood.
Any questions, anybody?
Just, you know, I have no relation at all, so...
I would just like to make a comment, I think last year, when this came up, there were concerns about the traffic, and Ms. McGee did go out of the way to try to make sure that the traffic was, the flow was, you know, appropriate, that there weren't any parking that, excuse me, goes along Hopkins Hill, where the Highlands at Hopkins Hill driveway or entrance comes out, and it, I actually used her business a number of times, and found that there really was not much of a traffic congestion. However, I believe it was last summer, end of the summer, that I was speaking with Ms. McGee when I was up there, and she said, what would be very helpful is to have a crosswalk that goes from about wherever her property is, over to the driveway or the entrance to the Highlands. And so, I did put that suggestion in, because, one, there's a bus stop there, and, two, there is a lot of foot traffic that comes from the Highlands to use her business. So, I, I'd like to follow up on the status of that, if we're doing roadwork on Hopkins Hill, it seems like a very easy, inexpensive thing to do, is to put a crosswalk down at that intersection.
It is a busy place for people to cross, without my business even being there, and a lot of people cross there coming from the neighborhood, and they want to get onto the sidewalk that has less, you know, I guess, crossing from cars, so it would be, I think, good for the neighborhood to have a crosswalk there.
Right, and there's actually, it is, and there's like a little bit of a, as you're coming up, it's a hill, so you might end up having traffic come down where you can't actually see it, and I just think it probably would be a very useful thing to put in, to increase the safety there, not only for people using the business there, but also, and most importantly, the schoolchildren that are waiting for the bus, or walking up Hopkins Hill after they're let off the bus.
Right, because the only other sidewalk is several blocks down the way towards Johnson Millard.
So, if you would, Mr. Manager, maybe follow up on that with our director of public works, I'd appreciate that.
Yeah, it looks like Coventry Police Department has no concerns, and you have your retail, excuse me, sales permit and your license?
Yes.
Are they, do you have mine?
Yes, I have, and we have them that are in their ballot.
Any other questions? Can I have a motion, please, to approve? Double second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good luck this summer.
Thank you.
Next?
A license application for one-day workers... A license application for a one-day huckers license on May 14th, 2016 by Gastros for an event at the Daniel Green Homestead at 50 Top Street.
Is anybody here representing? Welcome?
Oh, yeah.
Good name and address, please?
Owen Doyle, 14 Collier Street, Providence, Rhode Island.
And you did this, I think you were there last year, right?
No, I was not. Actually, Peter Gogan, who hosts me, host, he did it last year. He recommended it for me, yeah.
Okay. Any questions from anybody? It looks like the police have no concerns, and you have the necessary permits, retail sales, and Board of Health?
Yes.
And then your license is in order to be issued?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions, anybody? Can I have a motion to approve license?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Last one?
License application for a one-day huckers license on May 15th, 2016 by Neos Hacos for a venue at Daniel Green Homestead, 50 Top Street.
Name and address, please?
Peter Gogan, 3522 Minden Road, Providence, Rhode Island.
Okay. And you were the one that was there last year?
The year before.
The year before. Okay. Looks like the police have no concerns, you have the permits, retail sales, and Board of Health, and your license is in order to be issued. Do we have any questions?
It was quite a tune-up last year for you. It was quite good.
Yes, it grew a lot last year from the year before. If the weather's good, I think it'll be pretty big this year, too.
Great.
Yeah, after all that land clearing, too, it should be significant.
Yes, it's done a lot of work over there.
Yeah.
It's good, great. Any other, any questions, anybody? Can I have a motion, please, to approve?
I think, shouldn't it be subject to the receipt of these other items and also approval of a special use permit by a zoning?
That's the next one.
Has that happened?
No, you're...
That's the next one. Okay. I guess not that. Sorry about that. Don't move. Second?
Second.
Getting ahead of myself. We have a lot of licenses tonight.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And good luck. Hope the weather's great.
So do we.
Okay, now, now...
Mrs. George? Okay, this is a public hearing. Application by JW Pub, Inc., 433 Washington Street for Class B liquor license with Victor and Deans.
Can I have a motion to open a public hearing? Second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, is there someone here repri, oh, oh, sorry. That's okay. I didn't look.
Good evening. Oh, that's not, I'm sorry.
Name and address, please?
Joseph Brennan, 33 College Hill Road, Walgreen, Rhode Island, 02886. Good evening, Madam Vice Chair, and members of the council. For the record, again, Joseph Brennan, here on behalf of the applicant JW Pub, Inc., I have with me May Ping Wu of 79 Corporal Street, Transom Round, 02910. If the council has any questions that she can answer, that I wouldn't have information to. May Ping Wu is currently under a purchase and sales agreement to purchase a property at 433 Washington Street. It's a building that has been used in the past for restaurants. I think the last it was used for was Wild Burgers, but it's now a vacant property. That's the impression, I'm, it doesn't have anything. They're looking to purchase the building and bring life back to it in the form of JW Pub, Inc., for licenses with the dance as well. They have the following stipulation, I know that you mentioned just previously, I was, had conversations with Paul Sprague, and he mentioned to me that we need to seek a special use permit because I guess the zoning may have changed within the district, that they're now in a village district there. So I've spoken with her, and we have no problem going to the zoning board. We would like to continue forward today and ask that the council grant that to us with the condition of receiving approval from the zoning board for the special use permit. The type of restaurant they're looking to run is just your general American food that you buy at, see at any kind of bar and pub. They have extensive experience in the restaurant business. This Wu here actually used to own House of Wu for many years until she sold it. And so they're just kind of looking to get back into the business, and they see a really good opportunity for themselves and for the town of Coventry and that stuff.
Now, is it just this side where Wild was, not the whole building?
Not the whole building.
Just the half?
Just the half.
And did you get any of these other, the food manager certificate?
Yes, I did.
You've got that? Mrs. George?
I think she just has one in the past, but we understand that for the new building, and they may need one under the new license, and also any of the managers there. They'll also have their servers be service-safe alcohol training. All of those stipulations are standard for any restaurant to operate, and they'll comply with all of them.
And a Board of Health approval, certificate of good standing?
We will seek that.
They'll bring all of that in before we issue.
So you don't have to, oh, correct. No good stipulation. Now, do we, Nick, do we have to wait till they go to zoning and come back, or can we shut them?
You can, you can approve it with stipulations, or you can just hold it until they get the special use permit. It's really up to you.
Madam Vice President, sorry, just for the record, you're the attorney, please move.
Yes.
From our planning directory, it is provided that it's okay to get a food license, but not a liquor license at this time. The council can grant the permit with condition that the applicant gets a special use permit or continue the matter until they get the...
Does that license expire, the liquor license? Is that the issue?
They're applying for actual license.
Yeah, they're applying for actual license.
Right, yeah.
So I think, I think what Paul Sprague is saying is that the zoning ordinance requires that they get a special, that they can't have a liquor license until, they can't sell liquor there until they get approval from the zoning board as a special use permit. So I think it's hard to reconcile giving them the permit before they get the special use permit, even if you do it with conditions. I mean, it, I think it, I think it's clear that...
There was, there was wrongly a liquor license there, though. It was.
There was wrongly a liquor license there. For whatever reason, the, the applicant is applying for a special use permit, and that's all that we know.
We're, we're told we have to because the, we were told that from Mr. Sprague, I don't know if he's here tonight, he'll have more knowledge than I on the area, but that the, since the last occupant let the use lapse, that now we have to go before the board again for the new special use permit, because there's not one currently used there, and that it wasn't a general business, but that the zoning lines had changed and they're now in...
She just closed the doors. Madam Vice President, yeah, I hate to see it held up in any way. I want to see it available, move forward. There's been a few business attempts in there that hasn't worked out, and I'd love to see your business going there. So I'm all for giving it to a dependent to conditions, if that's what he feels is going to make him move forward. Just understand that if the special use permit is denied in any way, you are not going to be able to serve liquor. I mean, you'll still be able to serve your food, but you will not have liquor. So, I mean, I certainly don't want to hold these people up. I'd love to see a business going there, and, you know, it's in my district, it's a vacant building for a while, and I'd love to see, you know, a proper business going there.
I have a question.
Well, if they don't, just to clarify, if they don't get the special use permit, you don't get the license.
Yeah, and we, and they understand.
I mean, you can, you can look at it philosophically a couple of different ways. That's fine. If that's the way the council wants to do it, that's fine.
And, and the only reason why we asked the council, because we had the meeting scheduled, and then we just found out at the end of last week, and the sale itself is contingent upon the approvals being granted. That way, they don't have to invest the capital.
Right.
And we just want to keep it moving, because we don't want the seller to back out at the time.
But isn't it also contingent upon getting the liquor license?
Yes, yes. And that's, that's why we just figured we would try to go forward today instead of coming back, because then we would have to get the zoning approval, and then it would be more time before we can, we're able to come, although the council meets twice a month, but it's just extra time we're trying to make things work with the seller.
When, when does the special use permit airing?
We, we just found out Friday, so we don't even have an application in, but they're very aggressive in this, and we hope that we can get it in by the May deadline and put us on for the June agenda.
But we don't begin until the end of June, because we have...
The reason we need to take up our time with...